Rebecca, I'm the moderator of Tinto Kitchen. And, uh, thanks to me. We have fun events. I want everyone to leave knowing all the candidates so you can make an educated decision and vote who you think is your best candidate. Uh, this evening, we have Charlie Ryback from Southwest Voices as our moderator. We also have Tucson Morrison from On-Site Public Media. Now, we'll pass this on. I'll let the gentleman explain the rules this evening, and have fun.
Hey, everybody. I'm Charlie Ryback. I'm with Southwest Voices, southwestvoices.news. Uh, you can sign up for our free daily email newsletter at southwestvoices.news, and, uh, we cover everything going on in Ward 13. So, glad to be here. Great to see you, everybody.
My name is Tucson Morrison. Uh, I've spent the past 20 years moderating forums around the country regarding substance abuse, racism, sexism, and campuses around the country, and I'm very, very happy and privileged and honored to be here today. I started On-Site Public Media, an independent media company that covers very rarely told stories throughout the city. Uh, went to Minneapolis South High School, and so here we are today. Welcome to everybody. I'm gonna explain the rules very quickly, and we're gonna allow each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves. Our amazing timekeeper, Dave, is over here. Give it up for Dave, everybody. He's going to be keeping time. Dave will raise a yellow card when there is...
20 seconds?
When there's 20 seconds left, and then a red card when their time is up. We ask that you respect the time, and we will, we will shut it down if it gets past two minutes. We want to respect everybody's time here. So, without further ado, we start the time for Kate Mortensen to introduce herself.
Hey, everybody. Good night. I think tonight, I see the A-team out here in the crowd. I think we probably have the clappers and the snappers, and maybe some histris, too. I guess we'll find out as we go. I'm Kate Mortensen. I'm running for Minneapolis City Council in Ward 13 because I believe in a better city. I've lived here for 17 years. I grew up on the East Coast. I'm trained as a journalist. I've had the opportunity to serve in the classroom as a teacher. I've had the opportunity to serve my country in the United States Peace Forum. I have the opportunity to serve, uh, as a leader of the NCAA Men's Final Four in 2019, where I chaired the Host Committee for that event. I've also started my own business. I have experience in the public sector, the private sector, the philanthropic sector. I'm a governance expert. I've written governance and served on boards of directors of complex companies uh, in a governance role, and I, I had my first P and L, uh, when I was in my mid-20s. So, I have a lot of diverse experiences to bring to Ward 13's desire to see our city do better. And so, the reason that I'm here, the reason I'm running, is that I, I do believe in a better city. Uh, and we have really some great choices here, and hopefully, as time has passed, these choices have become clear. We have a very clear choice of what I, what I will call the status quo because it represents the way things are. It is the establishment. It includes all the stickers and bumpers and whistles and bells of being the establishment person. And I'm here to offer an alternative to that for the moderate self-Miniapolis voter who wants to see a different approach to the challenges that we have today. And so, I bring a background of journalism, uh, commitment in community, and what I want to see for our city is the things that we want to see in our communities are what everybody needs, and they are safety. I will not give up on the safety in our homes and our communities that we expect. I want to see our core services done well. We pay the taxes, but the services go down, and finally, working together across differences. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you all for coming, and Rebecca, thank you for putting this together. I really appreciate all of our local small businesses, and Rebecca has a particular passion for just taking something and working on it and getting it done. Um, and that was her, just a very short while ago, putting on this forum. Just a few weeks ago, I was here for the Fulton Annual Meeting, and Ray Clare over there was pretty much helping to run it along with some others that I don't see immediately here.
I'm Linaya Palmasano, and I am currently your 13th Ward City Council Member. All day, every day, I'm your City Council Member. Um, by night, I am a candidate for reelection. I'm the City Council Vice President, and I am running as the DFL endorsed candidate, the labor endorsed candidate, including first responders like our firefighters, the building trades that are helping us rebuild our city, and of special importance to me, women winning. Now, that's a coalition. Uh, that's not, to me, the status quo. That's something that's hard to hold together. I have served you, my neighbors, for nearly 10 years at City Hall. This hasn't been an easy job, but in fact, it's been harder than I've ever imagined. I think for all of us living here in the city, these past few years have been harder than we've ever imagined. We've been through civil unrest. We've been through a global pandemic, and unfortunately, this job comes with making tough choices. Choices I love having the responsibility to make on your behalf. And the solutions that we have require a lot more than snappy slogans. So, despite these significant challenges, I've worked really hard to affect change and deliver meaningful results. I'm not interested in political expediency or self-promotion. You know the work that I've done in this community. You know where I've come from in this community. I think that you deserve, um, someone to stand up for the 13th Ward, even when it's... Thank you. I asked for your first choice vote of ever, so.
Zach Metzger.
Hey, everybody. How you doing tonight? Really good? Yes. Um, I don't think I actually need the microphone. Um, I'm usually loud. That being said, I just want to say thank you guys all so much for coming out. Thank you, Rebecca, for having us at your amazing restaurant here. Thank you, Mrs. Mortensen. Thank you, Council Vice President Linaya, and thank you guys all for coming out here. I am the only candidate from Minneapolis. You know, as a kid growing up here, I remember being told when I was at Jefferson, now Ella Baker and Whittier, "You're the future," and that future is, is right now. You know, I can't deny my advocacy and that it agitates a lot of people. But, this is what happens when you stand up for justice. You know, over this past week, I have received over 100 death threats. But I want to tell you guys a quick story to tie that in. Uh, when I was in kindergarten, I was on the bus, and a friend of mine, he was getting bullied, and I, as a little five-year-old, punched this kid, right, that was the bully. And I was the only one that got in trouble. Um, luckily, I've grown from that, and I don't want to punch people anymore. But I still will stand up for what's right, even at my own expense. That being said, this is not a job to me. I feel like this is a duty. This is a responsibility. You know, Martin, I want to end with this. Martin Luther King said, "Make a career out of humanity. Commit yourself to the noble struggle of equal rights." It'll make a better person of yourself. It'll make a greater nation of our country and a finer world to live in. My name is Zach Metzger. I hope that I can get you our first rank for Minneapolis City Council, Ward 13.
Give it up for your candidates, everybody.
...city than there are beds available? If the city conducts a sweep of the homeless encampment, where do you think people without homes should go? Linaya, you're up first.
Thank you. You know, I think that when we look at people experiencing homelessness, we have to understand that they're at the intersection of so many things. They're at the intersection of often mental health needs, uh, very active chemical addiction, definitely income inequality, and a lack of affordable housing options. Social services are typically handled by the county, but on the city end, we've been choosing to get more and more involved in this work. I think we need pathways out of homelessness so that we don't have encampments anymore. So, that's why I've supported and will continue to work on robust temporary solutions to help folks exit the cycle of homelessness, such as, we've supported Avivo as a city council this last, these last four years, and now Avivo South. Those are small, like tiny home, um, opportunities for people to have their own space, to not have to carry their worldly belongings on their back every day. That is not homelessness that is having a place to go every single night. We've supported and we've changed the law on single-room occupancy rules. I think that is a very affordable way out of a path of experiencing consistent or irregular homelessness. We have done things like our emergency rental assistance program. That has shown and continues to show that there's a great need for that. We have wraparound services. We have mental health services. We have financial literacy and chemical dependency services, um, childcare services. These are all necessary to keep someone in housing and not shift back to homelessness.
I'll use the mic now, so I don't lose my voice, but let me know if I'm too loud on this mic. I just want to start off by saying and acknowledging that we are on stolen Dakota land. With that being said, let's just keep that in mind. I'm gonna give you guys some data to start off with. Over the last four years, the city of Minneapolis has spent $8 million of your taxpayer dollars on evicting homeless encampments. Here's some more data. Over 2/3 of homeless people in the United States are disabled. These are the most at-risk residents. Yet, when we, not we, but governments try to figure out how to handle these at-risk people that are 2/3 of the time disabled, it's oftentimes inhumane. We have a mayor that, when he won in 2017, said he would be the first mayor in the United States to eradicate homelessness. With that being said, it's not only inhumane, but it's extremely cost ineffective. We have the Near North Encampment for six, about six people that cost $276,000 to evict six people. You guys can do the math on that. Linaya is an amazing person. I like you. You're great. I will say that she voted to continue the eviction of homeless encampments. I think this is critically important. One of the roles of city council members is accountability, legislative, but also to be transparent. So, in the sake of transparency, I just want to offer that information. Avivo villages are critical. We need a housing-first solution, which is widely known throughout the world, to work. The way we are going about things right now does not work. It's inhumane. It's not cost-effective. And where are these homeless people that you guys, so many people of us, do not, you know? I could, I could go on forever about this, but we need new solutions on this.
Thanks, Zach. So, I, I'm running a campaign of effectiveness. Effectiveness over efforts, results over working hard. Those things are great, but we do need those results, and we need the effectiveness. And on the issue of unsheltered homelessness, the city is unacceptably part of the problem, and I'll give you an example of how. Last winter, we utterly failed to clear the snow from our streets. I had neighbors who said, "I can't get out of my driveway. Like, I know the world's really hard, but I can't get out of my driveway." Somebody else can't get to work, and if they can't get to work, they cannot get paid. And if they do not get paid, they are choosing between food and childcare. This is the, the tickets and towing that happened last year, hundreds, thousands of tickets, hundreds of tow's. This is the $300 and the $400 that people do not have who are on the cusp of things like eviction. And so, a city that is doing their basic services well is a city that is serving everybody. And when we fail at those basic services, people can die. People can die from sleeping outdoors. They, they can die at the hands of unjust leasing. They, they can lose their homes. I mean, we have to understand that in Ward 13, when we're inconvenienced, others across the city are potentially devastated by our failures. So, when it comes to unsheltered homelessness, I would bring a sense of urgency that we just do not have to build the temporary solutions of housing first. We're putting a million into the second Avivo house, and that's great, and it can't take that long. We have to, we have to act as if it's an emergency because it is an emergency. And so, that means we have to redouble these efforts so that nobody who is outdoors has, does not have the option to have shelter that night. Thank you.
We're on to question two. We will start with Zach, and you will get two minutes each for this question. For context to this question, Ward 13 is predominantly white with a median household income above $100K. Ward 9 is predominantly people of color with a median household income below $100K. I will repeat this question if you need me to repeat it. That is the context for the question. Recently, a sauna in Ward 13 was shut down for multiple reasons, one of them being wood fire smoke coming from the tops of the outdoor saunas. The smoke seemed to be a disturbance to some of the nearby residents of Ward 13 and was thusly shut down. Meanwhile, in Ward 9, the East Phillips community impacted by arsenic in their soil was being threatened by a demolition of a building that could have pushed more debris containing arsenic into the air. Yet, the Minneapolis City Council voted to have that building demoed, even with knowledge of it threatening the air quality of the surrounding community. If elected, how would you vote on the demo of such a building? And would your vote be determined by if that building were in Ward 13 or not?
Thank you for the question, Tucson. The way I started my last question ironically has so much to do with this because the people that were protesting the Roof Depot in East Phillips, on, on their land, were predominantly indigenous people. Yet, our city council member in Ward 13 called them paid protesters for standing up against environmental racism. If you guys aren't aware of that term, research that one. That being said, that question was so eloquently put because it shows the differences for the same situation for different people. I actually live right next to Embrace North and was a member of Embrace North. The two saunas apparently had the same, created the same poor air quality as Flint, Michigan, as East Phillips, as Jeremiah Ellison's Ward in North Minneapolis. And when residents of Ward 13 had a problem with it, that business was shut down. But as Tucson mentioned, when residents with the same problem in a different area that don't look the same or make the same amount of money wanted clean air, they didn't get it. The obvious and vast disparities between the people in our city experiencing the same problems is a problem if it's not handled properly. I would have obviously voted not to tear down the East Phillips Roof Depot and stand with the residents of our city. We know what we want and how we want it more than any politician does. And when people in that position don't stand with the residents and community, that is not okay with me. I would have obviously not voted to tear down East Phillips Roof Depot. Done.
Kate?
Thank you, Tucson. This is, this is really a great question because it, it really shows a distinction between how I would handle these situations on behalf of Ward 13. Number one, cold plunge sauna, that's just about the coolest thing ever. That could be the next, uh, homebrew beer. That could be the next thing that we could be known for. A, a healthy experience to have with friends. Um, it can't happen where it was. But the first thing that, that, that we did for Ward 13 is we went over and told them all the reasons why they couldn't. And that is just a shame and a loss for us, I feel. It would have been a super cool thing to have a cold plunge sauna business in this part of our city. As it was, they moved to another part of the city that was more welcoming for their business and their business idea. So, that, that's one thing. How about, how do we do this instead of, here's all the reasons why not? Okay? The second thing is that East Depot situation with our primarily indigenous populations, a historically traumatized community, that said to me, "These are our values. These are the yard signs we put out front saying, 'All are welcome here.'" How can we possibly say that we are going to release that arsenic triangle air to our neighbors in East Phillips when you bet you 100% we would just never do the same thing here? Ever, 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 and it probably wouldn't be there in the first place. So, so for me, you're gonna get a more thoughtful social agenda, and you're gonna see someone who's looking for those opportunities for us to shine.
Okay, Linaya?
Thank you. This is a little different than the way the question was originally posed to me, but I'm happy to answer it. You know, I think we're equating two very different things here. First, the Roof Depot vote was mentioned. You know, Roof Depot has been at least a six-year effort, that I've actually been on both sides of votes around. I supported the members that were the council members of the ward when this was an opportunity for racial healing in our communities. But I do want something better than an old vacant roofing factory for the people of East Phillips. And I do think that an expansion of our city water functions that would be the greenest industrial use ever in this industrial zoning with a, with a jobs program and a, and a training facility for the people in the surrounding communities, including East Phillips, is an ideal bed. I would put such a thing here in the 13th Ward. I think it is more important for it to be centrally located and in this space, which is how the city purchased this property. Now, we have a unanimously approved memorandum of understanding that took a lot of work from all of my colleagues and I, that would both give back land and not dirty land, not arsenic-filled land, but fully remediated and tested with a third-party external consultant to verify that we would never give back dirty land to this community. And the land that we give back will be fully remediated, and it will be for that community's use. Just real quickly, we have a lot of important things that we do to try and support small businesses. We have, um, a great small business team at the city, but my office jumps in numerous times, as do other council members around here, when there is, um, a potential problem or people trying to open a business, just in the last few weeks. Thank you.
As a council member, what we do to combat climate change and support the climate and equity plan at the city, and what actions have you taken to back up that commitment?
So, absolutely, and I just want to really credit Ward 13 activists on the People's Climate and Equity Plan. You were so well organized. I was so impressed with how thoughtful you have, you were about the plan, its equitable nature, its ambitious goals, the need for ongoing funding for the plan. And I was excited that first time we met to put your badge on and wear it all the way through the convention. I said, "You had me a hello. What's next?" And people looked at me like, "Wait, this never happens." And, but I have spent enough time around trying to get things accomplished with government to know it just shouldn't be that hard to get a really good idea moving forward. So, I was fully for it, and when the council did approve a 10-year plan, uh, and it was, the water was carried by, by council members Goodman and Shouk Chai, good for them. Um, I was so, I, I was surprised that there was so much excitement in the room because there didn't seem to be as much excitement from our own council member here about, "Let's do this thing." So, as we move forward with this plan, I will be looking at, to work with partners on the progressive end of council around matching every dollar with better of funds so we can go further, faster on our climate resilience. I am completely down for that and excited. And in Ward 13, between solar farms and rooftop solar, there are so many ways we want to get in this game of climate change. We're gonna unleash that energy and bring those solutions more readily and more excessively and with greater urgency to the fore. So, I'm really excited about what we will do together on climate.
Thanks. First, I want to answer as a council member. I work to shape, in part with the help of many of you and others that are part of MN350 across our city. We work to shape a draft plan. We work to do careful, thoughtful community engagement with groups around our city. Then, we voted to adopt the city's climate plan. I, um, this is the second time that my opponent has objected to my lack of peppiness or enthusiasm about that plan, and I find that an extremely gendered comment about how I was feeling at that moment. So, help, let me explain. My vote on the Minneapolis Climate Equity Plan was before we had found a way to fund that plan. So, we were writing a lot of checks as a city council in that moment without figuring out or telling the community how we were going to fund it. Then, I had an opportunity as Council Vice President to co-author the electric franchise fee portion of this with Council Member Shouk Chai. That's our franchise agreement with Xcel Energy. And that's going to bring in, along with our Centerpoint Gas Franchise Fee Increase, $10 million for work to fund workforce development, to create good city green jobs, to do climate incentives, to work on weatherization and electrification kinds of incentives. We're doing a lot with urban forestry. We are quadrupling our investments in urban forestry, something I'm pretty passionate about for you, and I served as a Minneapolis Tree Commissioner because of it. We're doing carbon sequestration, which started right here in the 13th Ward, in places across our city. But, you know, it's important to use our other policies, like our Transportation Action Plan, which I was enthusiastic supporter of. This is, as Zach says, it's about humanity, climate change. On a personal level, I'll just say, I live what I preach. My spouse and I had a Home Energy Squad visit, and we took those recommendations.
Zach?
Thank you. So, quickly, back to the last question, real quick. That building that you mentioned is in the most, the most, um, harmed neighborhood in the city, and that building would have had 800 Minneapolis vehicles at it in the already most harmed neighborhood. East Phillips has an eight times higher asthma rate than the rest of, than Linden Hills, than Southwest Minneapolis. Why would we put 800 more vehicles there? Next question. We need more transport, public transportation that is not only accessible to people that can go not just north and south, east and west in our city, but diagonally. Minneapolis was formerly known as the Jim Crow of the north. You look at the segregation. You can't get from Southwest Minneapolis on public transportation to the north side. That's done by design in the 1910s. That being said, we need to shut down the Hennepin County Energy Recovery Center, which is just a massive trash burner. We need, uh, public EV stations for electric vehicles, and we need to support the People's Climate Equity Plan fully with a just transition. You mentioned that a lot of checks had been spent. But over the last three years, Minneapolis taxpayers have spent $150 million on police misconduct, PTSD claims, and pension payouts. So, when we talk about a lot of dollars being spent, let's talk about a lot of dollars being spent. We're the only city in the United States right now with not one, but two consent decrees. We had a US Attorney General come here and tell us that if we didn't follow a list of 24 demands... I think you guys are aware of what would have happened then. That being said, Minneapolis has money. So, when we say, "Where's the money?", I don't know. We just spent $150 million on police in the last three years. Where is the money? It's your taxpayer money. Do you want it on police or do you want it on environment? We only got one planet.
For context to this next question, in law enforcement, use of excessive force. Repeat that again. Minnesota has some of the highest racial disparity in the country when it comes to use of excessive force by law enforcement. Beginning of the question is, how would you approach public safety? What's working and what's not? To go in depth, in a study by Reuters in 2020, it was found that Minneapolis police have engaged in a patterned practice of using excessive force on black people and indigenous people at higher rates than that of their white counterparts. If elected, how would you work to, how would your work address this malpractice of the Minneapolis police force? Linaya?
I think, am I the first person to answer this question?
Who, who first, last?
I think it's... It's my first. I...
Go ahead.
I honestly don't remember.
I think Kate was right, but it's okay. I don't care. I don't know. It's all good. Question one more time, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can you read the question again?
I'll go, I'll go. So, what are, how are we gonna do public safety details?
So, Linaya?
Thank you. Tucson, would you be able to repeat that question?
I'll repeat the question. Beginning of it was, how would you approach public safety? What's working and what's not? In a study by Reuters in 2020, it was found that the Minneapolis police have engaged in a patterned practice of using excessive force on black people and indigenous people at higher rates than that of their white counterparts. If elected, how would your work address this malpractice of the Minneapolis police force?
Thank you. Something that is not exciting to say, not exciting to talk about in a neighborhood meeting, but is an incredibly...
I inherited one financial auditor when I came in as a freshman councilmember and became chair of our audit committee. Since that time, I have built an effective audit department that looks at processes, that looks at auditing our police department when they don't want to be, auditing our police department when they ask for their help. So whether it is about sexual assault investigation kits, recruiting of police officers to help correct for imbalances in our police department, or specific use of things like, we all know that overwork, sleep deprivation leads to bad decision-making. So in part, correcting some of this bias overt or subconscious of fair and just policing practices is about studying every single measurable one of those things and then going at that with the information with the intent and the interest in improving it and persuading our mayors, our public officials, and our police department to do so. Now we have, as Toussaint mentioned earlier, both a settlement agreement and most likely forthcoming a consent decree to force that kind of investment in our police department. You know, my approaches to public safety are more than just police. It's been and spent a lot of time with our fire department. It's about alternatives like mental health responders and violence interrupters, just not at the expense of the staffing resources that we need to fund a police department, which we need to do. And I agree that some of these expenditures have been obscene. You know, I've championed public safety reform since I first ran in 2013.
Zach?
So this really gets to...
Okay, okay.
Go, man, go!
It's okay. We're all confused here.
Run your race!
We have spent $36 million more, public taxpayer dollars again, on public safety this year than we did two years ago, but I'll ask you guys, what do we have to show for that, right? I don't know. If you guys could tell me, maybe you know something I don't know. That $36 million is just to cover overtime. One of the policies that I'm going to fight for at City Hall is called a police tax rebate, a rebate like any other. If the money doesn't get spent, you get it in return. It speaks to two things, not getting enough services for your tax dollars and our failing public safety system. The way it works is that we cap the amount of overtime that an officer can get. The average officer in Minneapolis makes $140,000 United States dollars a year. $60,000 of that is overtime. We cap the amount of overtime they use so that the money can actually be used for crime prevention, so that your guys' garages don't get broken into anymore. If we do not utilize that money, it goes back to the same taxpayers that spent the money in the first place. We also need a citizens-only review board of police misconduct. When we talk about racism in America, most of the time it's systemic, and police being on review boards, investigating police, that is systemic racism. Our city councilmember is one of the only city councilmembers that voted to keep police on citizens-only police review boards. The name alone excludes police. Additionally, we need to fully fund the Behavioral Crisis Response Team. As Linay said, police are not the only form of public safety. We also need to have professional liability insurance. My mom's a cosmetologist. She needs professional liability insurance, all the way up to engineers and doctors, but police don't. My mom does. She cuts hair, but a cop who has your life in their hands doesn't? That would look like the city paying the base rate in any misconduct that makes their rates go up. The police pay for that. You can check all of these policies out on my website. When it comes to public safety, I am your candidate. That is a fact.
Thank you, and I beg your pardon, Zach. I'm sorry about that. This is a really good example of a difference between two moderate candidates for this office. There is one who is focused on managing, measuring, running audits, filing reports, okay? Tripling the size of the audit department, taking it from two years ago, $900,000, to $2.4 million more audits are not going to solve these problems that we have. We need to move from audits to action, and we need to have someone who has a leadership orientation, which is mine. I'm very ambitious for the result. All of this effort is to get to a result, not just to continually move in a circular, never-ending effort. Justine Damon lost her life, and then George Floyd was murdered, and nothing happened with police off-duty gigs, nothing. We looked at several times, we put it aside, we looked at it again, and nothing happened. And so what we need is a leader who is willing to say, "Stop the train, okay? Did we have to be in this position? I don't know, because I wasn't in that seat." And so when the George Floyd murder happened, to myself, I said, "I don't want to feel like I'm responsible for that, but I know I'm responsible for what happens next. I know I'm responsible for what happens next." And we have slow-walked change in our city of Minneapolis. We have way too many 911 calls that do not need a badge or a gun, and people are terrified of asking for help in case a badge or a gun may show up. That is not the kind of help they need. The Office of Innovation and Performance Management has been stonewalled, has been Heismaned, has been underfunded, and that means that our sworn officers are over there handling calls they shouldn't be, and they're not available to handle real crime crimes, which continues to go up in Ward 13, including robbery with threats of violence. And I checked that just before I came over. And so we really need to recognize that the world of policing is changing, and we are behind the lines. Thank you.
All right. For this one, we will start with Zach. More welcoming for children and for families.
Thank you for the question, Charlie. I have to respond to this real quick. You just said all that you said. You're saying one thing, but your website literally says another thing. You on your website want to do a police time buyback. There's cops outside. We could go ask them. They know that's not a good policy. Even Linay, who is deemed to be the most conservative candidate, when Justine Demond...
I hate to hear people talk, not yell at me.
Now I'll take the mic away. Hold on, hold on, hold on. No, no, no.
He has his time.
Hold on, hold on. He has his time.
Well, they'll give you the time.
He has his time.
This is in your place to speak, though. This is his time. Respect that, please. Respect it. As you mentioned in 2017, Linay did a lot of work in 2017, deemed the most conservative candidate. Even she did an investigation with the then Minneapolis Police Chief Arredondo to say, "Whoa, we can't have these cops working overtime." Mohamed Noor was just finished a 12-hour shift to go to an eight-hour shift. She did that. And then you advocate for a police time buyback? That is not only racist, but an abhorrent policy that... Come on, you guys, are we kidding? Like, I'm emotional over that one because that is deeply disturbing. Don't sit up here and lie to these people. I don't even know what the question was, Charlie. How do we make sure that kids are good in the city?
More welcoming.
More welcoming. I went to Jefferson, now Ella Baker. I loved it. It was amazing. Like I said in my intro, I was taught that I'm going to be the future and that we can stand up for what's right and do what we want to do. We need programs. We need to enrich neighborhoods, which reduces crime. We need to make sure that the people that have historically not had enough, we give them what they need. We enrich these neighborhoods. We make sure that to move our city forward, we focus on the people that will be leading I just want to, let's not lie to people up here, you guys. This is not a presidential campaign. This is local. We all know where we each other live. Come on.
One second, Kate. I just want to address what happened. As an aside, if that happens again, I'm going to ask you to leave, or I'm going to remove my body from the space because I don't feel safe with people interrupting the candidates when it's their time. So please, if you could not speak while he's speaking, or Kate, or Linay is speaking, out of respect for them, that would be great. And that's just part of the rule here. Please don't ever do that again. Please don't ever do that again. This is Kate's time now. Go ahead, Kate.
Okay. Okay, and I respect there's a lot of passion around this topic, so I do want to double back and say that I'm completely opposed to any kind of privatization of policing. I know there are neighborhoods like Lowry Hill that paid $250,000 to have extra police duty. Zach, is it my turn? Thank you. So I'm opposed to anything like that. But when our police officers have done their straight time and their overtime and all their mandatory time, they can go do whatever they want, including drinking a mulcet in their backyard. I happen to know from a 17-year street cop, they might like to take a shift in a different part of town where they're not going from emergency to emergency. So I beg your pardon. That seems to me not a totally unreasonable way to meet the need of a police officer who wants to earn some extra overtime. So there's that. But when it comes to children and families, back when Betsy Neera was made, Betsy Hodges was made mayor, I went to Betsy and I said, "I think one of the most important things we could do is make our city the best city to be a kid." Like, that would be really great if we thought about that for our youngest, that our city is a place where there are crosswalks and playgrounds and there aren't needles or syringes and there's, you know, these places are safest for our youngest and our oldest because then they'll be safest for everybody in between. And I feel like as a city, we aren't that city for our kids, but it's a great time to think about that because the state has just invested billions to be the best state to be a kid. This is a great time for us to say, "Let's be the best city to be a kid." And in particular, you need to pay attention to our youth in these last number of years when they weren't at school. They did not have lunch, okay? So some of the things we're experiencing now with youth mental health challenges, they are the legacy of this period of time where our kids, they have been abandoned without a champion for their healthy development. And so I want us to leverage our city assets, and we have many, so that there's always a place indoors and there's always a field outdoors for our youth to gather for programming that's focused on their unique needs. Thank you.
Linay?
Thank you. Your question was, "How will we work to make the city more welcoming for children and families?" And the beginning of these is that public safety is the biggest part of this, and you've heard that in some of these responses. And we're all going to make our argument that we're the strongest safety candidate. But when we talk about how do we really set up our city for children and families, that goes in a lot of places. And Gretchen Musikant, a 13th Ward constituent, who used to be our Health Commissioner, is now working on having official designations and taking a public health approach to making us a child-welcoming city that guides our work, that guides our work as a city council. You know, even things like improving our pedestrian areas, these are things we do as a city. These are things that make it a safe place for children and for families. Also, in my time on city council, we now have an Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs to help new people to our country and help them take root right here inside our city. But also, great public schools. Now, that's not a part of this job, being part of our school board, but the tack I take is how do we do this as a city? Because how do we help kids show up ready to learn every single day? You know, I'm the daughter of a public school teacher and a principal and administrator. I've looked at what it would take to get every child in our city universal pre-K access. That's not ready yet on a city level. But things like our Stable Homes, Stable Schools program that help schools support families in need so that they can stay going to that Ella Baker School throughout their matriculation of their education, great public parks partnering with the Park Board for different programs that help support kids and families, great neighborhoods, you know, strong neighborhood associations, create a sense of belonging and engagement, and very easy-to-access free events.
And this is the "How many police officers should the city of Minneapolis have?" question. I'll give some context surrounding this. Usually, when a city engages in malpractice with their law enforcement, there is a drastic fallout in staff. We've seen this happen in Ferguson, Missouri, Baltimore, New Orleans, Detroit, and New Mexico. As a result of the murder of George Floyd, there's been a massive fallout in staff. And as a result of that, Minneapolis has allotted $16 million for police reform in the 2024 budget to comply with the court order. How many police officers should the city of Minneapolis have? If more than we have today, what new recruitment or retention strategies would you push to help us get there?
Thank you, thank you, Toussaint. So a terrible recruitment play is to reward horrible behavior by cops on their way out the door. And very recently, our city councilmember took the sole vote to award $150,000 of worker comp. Okay, earned, I understand, but all of the other colleagues said, "We're just not going to go there with this guy. He beat someone so badly." That they won a $1.5 million judgment against the city, and a person of color, okay? And so that has to stop, and it doesn't stop until we behave differently than we used to in the past. And so we cannot allow these things to go forward if we expect to recruit good cops. So that is one thing. When it comes to HR, I know that what we want to do is we want to look for the cautions for people who are in it, maybe not for the right reasons. And we want to counsel those out on the front end, be smart about that. I spent a couple of hours at the last open streets with some HR leaders for the police department, and I loved hearing from them about what they're looking for because I thought, "Yeah, I can get behind that with you." And I spent a dog watch with a 17-year street cop, and he was showing me his equipment, and I got to see where he worked. And it's crappy. It's crappy. And he could move to another job very close by that paid quite a bit more, and he could decide tomorrow to step away and take some of that, you know, trauma opportunity that cops do have. So we have to stop talking out of both sides of our mouth, and I will say, I am pro-professional police. I'm a Ward 13 moderate Democrat, and I believe there's a role for policing in our society. And let's not have the badge and the gun engaged where their special skills are not needed, okay? And so I really would love us to have a more developed and nuanced, because it's all theoretical, are we going to be able to hire 750 police officers? I don't know, maybe never. So we're going to need a role in technology, and we're going to need alternative ideas. Thanks.
Linay?
Thank you. I think that my opponent just recently mentioned the Biddle case, and I'm not sure about that, but I don't believe it was a sole lone vote for such a thing. When we do police separations, these are lawsuits, and this is our negotiated way out of a situation that is the lowest amount of taxpayer dollars that will be spent for such a separation based on labor agreements. And you have to understand what you're doing to be able to make decisions on that. I hate giving taxpayer dollars to police conduct mishandlings. Police work is very tough. I've been a part, and made myself a part, of more settlement negotiations in our courts than anybody else. It gives me an opportunity to understand some of the hardest policing that we've done. You know, I know I'll be criticized up here for every tough decision that I've made without the ability to offer context, so let me just try to get to the question. The charter requires us to have 731 officers right now. We have a couple hundred less than that, but that is not a special or magic number. That's literally something that was put in the charter based on population. When we get to the kinds of other types of public safety response that can take some of that call load off of our police officers, then we will be able to reduce that number. But I, starting in 2013, first campaigning for office, felt that by, based on population, based on the size of our metro area, being the urban core of that metro area, we are significantly down in terms of having adequate law enforcement. And that means response times, that means how you get prioritized as a caller. When there is a carjacking in southwest Minneapolis, that is not a priority one call for police officers. If we had more to respond to, you would get service faster. I would absolutely like to in-house, off-duty work.
Zach?
Toussaint, can you repeat the question for me?
Usually, after a city has engaged in malpractice with their law enforcement department, there is a massive fallout in the number of staff that are on duty. For context, the city of Minneapolis has allotted $16 million for police reform in the 2024 budget to comply with the court order. The mayor's proposed $7.6 million in the 2024 go to 34 full-time positions for across city departments. How many police officers should the city of Minneapolis have? If more than we have today, what new recruitment or retention strategies would you push for to help us get there?
Thank you for that. Nobody really wants to be a cop in America because the culture of policing in America. So when we're talking about, "We can't hire anyone." Yeah. Do you want to be a cop? They have like 30 jobs to do. I would be a fifth-generation first responder. We actually have a former Minneapolis firefighter in the building right here, this tall gentleman. I would be this fifth generation of firefighters if I went that route. Firefighters have like three, four jobs. You can ask John After what his jobs were. Police have like 30 jobs. Nobody can do 30 things, right? I can barely do three things, right? That being said, meeting the 731 in that charter, but it's not just... but it's not just, we always ask, we need more officers. Why don't we ever say we need more quality officers? We never, we always skip that part. If we have more of the same, we'll keep getting more of the same, which is $150 million in police misconduct, PTSD claims and, and pension payouts, as I mentioned previously, which is exactly why I mentioned the police tax rebate, policy that I would like to fight for at City Hall. It speaks exactly to this, our budget not being utilized. Then the police say, "We don't have any money." Well, we do, but it's all in overtime. So then we can't do anything else because they got all the money. And it's this circle. How do we get more quality officers so that we don't continue to have these problems? We know how to do it. The city has money. We just continually vote against the will of the people. And it ends up looking like these crimes that are starting to happen in Ward 13. And let's stop the rhetoric of crime being up 400% violent crime. I don't see crime in Minneapolis. Get off crime watch, you guys. We live in the greatest part of the city. You're not in Lakeville. Does that mean that crime should go, go up? No. But let's, let's be grateful and aware of our privilege of living in these neighborhoods, where, yeah, there is some crime.
Thank you. We reached the end of the questions. We're a teeny tiny bit behind schedule, so we're going to do a minute to wrap up for everybody and we will start with Leni.
Thank you. You all know me here. You know I listen and I am all in. I am your neighbor, I'm your friend, I'm your mother over there in the back of the room. And I'm your daughter, too. I've also been a consistent, level-headed advocate for my constituents for 10 years of service, where I'm at City Hall and in community, both of those things for you every single day. My kids have grown up in neighborhood meetings and community gatherings across our city. You want your council member at the leadership table like I have done. In this way, you have a voice in everything. I believe in honest, transparent government. I believe in fair and just policing. I want for us to be the best city in the nation. I want our roads and our flowing to improve. I work really hard to ensure basic city services happen efficiently and effectively. So even when my work isn't in the headlines, I deliver for people of our city. My work here is in time and I ask for your vote.
Thank you guys all so much for coming out tonight. I'm the only candidate up here that grew up as a kid in Minneapolis. Back to your question. You know, in 2020, after George Floyd, the city was burning down and so many people were protesting. And a lot of people said, "Hey, get out of the streets. Do it a different way. Get out of the streets, try to move policy and get for the seat." Well, I've gotten out of the street and I'm here for the seat. A lot of you guys have Black Lives Matter signs in your yard. But if everybody in here with the Black Lives Matter sign voted for me today, I would win. But I need you guys to put actions behind your words. If you still want that same equity that you were talking about in 2020, I'm here for you. I am the change that you have asked for. When you go into that booth, you'll have the opportunity to consider voting for Leni a fourth time. Do you want more of the same or do you want to get the change that you actually asked for? My name is Zach, my name is Zach Metzger. I hope that I can get your rank first. Hallelujah. Thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you Vice President Palmasano.